Second.
The motion verifying the audibility of members voices was approved.
I had to change my name.
Thank you, Brian. Second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures. The fact that we are meeting electronically.
You gotta go to the.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
I think that's Phil.
I think that was Phil.
Oh, was that Phil?
I think he's on his phone. Yeah.
He's muted.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go on.
Okay.
What type of electronic communication is being used and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting? Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Phil. I got you. We got you. Unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting and that as such, via as usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting, and the public may access this meeting.
So I have a second for that motion.
I'll second it.
Suzanne again. Okay, all in favor, please?
Yes.
Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Nope, the motion passes.
Okay. Finally, is next required that all the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government, or and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations, and the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities?
Do I need a second for that? I think so. Yeah. Who do I have? Suzanne again. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Nope, it's passed, and I'll give you the gavel back.
Hey, great. Now, the first item that we have is the presentation of staff excellence awards. So this is great. This is modeled after the ALA program, Your Favorite Librarian, and it's in its third year, if I'm right, a third year at FCPL. Nominations are accepted from members of the public and other staff members and volunteers, et cetera, for two, roughly two weeks in February, kind of coinciding with Valentine's Day, because it's like a nice little Valentine. And this year, we received over 150 nominations. I think that's right, more than that. And all of them were worthy, everybody, all of them. So Sheila and I were the committee with Jessica's incredible assistants and Bobby also. And so we have our awardees, and many of them are here, I noticed. And so I'm gonna start with, I guess it's alphabetical sort of with district. And so the first district is Braddock. So that will be Brian, if you could make the presentations for your district awardees.
I'd be very, I'd be very pleased to. I want to ask this. Do the, do the awardees get a chance to speak later or during the introduction?
The awardees will have a chance to speak. Once you've read their introduction, they can have an opportunity to say something right afterwards.
Okay, good. I'm very pleased that I get to announce three people today, all from Burke Center Library, one of the ones in my district and the one I spend most of my time at. I know them all, and it's very appropriate that these three women get this award during Women's Month and the day after International Women's Day. So I'll read them also in alphabetical order. First, Jill Johnson. She's the branch manager of the Burke Center Library. Her nominator said Jill not only serves as Burke Center Branch Manager, she also serves simultaneously as interim branch manager at Oakton. She very ably supported the friends of the Burke Center Library as we met monthly, even though she was at another library. She helped, we held a major holiday book sale. We coped with an overabundance of donations when they were again accepted. She is one of the most helpful, pleasant, effective, and through it all, calm managers I've ever had the pleasure to meet and work with. So Jill, do you have anything to say? No?
Well, I'm speechless. No, no, thank you. I just, I did want to point out that the only, the only reason I could have gone off to be the interim branch manager at Oakton was because of the awesome management team at the Burke Center Library. In particular, I want to call out Matt Moffett. He let me just scoot off to another library and he held down the fort. And yeah, so the kudos, I need to share the kudos with him. But yes, thank you. I feel so honored.
Well deserved. Well deserved. The next one, Kim Nguyen, I don't believe is here tonight, but I will read it. She's a library aide at the Burke Center Library. Her many nominators said, "I rely upon interlibrary loans very much for research and writing relating to my work and hobbies. You can tell that some staff view processing ILL requests, interlibrary loan requests, and checkouts as a chore, but Ms. Nguyen always is prompt, helpful, responsive, and friendly in dealing with me and my special requests. She's an extraordinarily positive staff member in a library full of helpful staff. She really stands out as a great representative of professional library services. She makes the library feel like a little community in which I can feel at home and where my needs are taken seriously." Another said, "Ms. Nguyen is always smiling and helpful. She brightens everyone's days." And another said, "I think that Kim contributes 100% to the welcoming and friendly environment of this library brand. She's always the first to welcome people as they come through the front doors with a big smile, even with a mask on, and is always incredibly helpful and kind, even if I've been regrettably cranky." So Kim, I wish you were here tonight. She is not, but please, Jill, let her know how much everybody loves her. All right. And the third woman, who again, I have known for years and worked a lot with, Anita Poe, is a youth services info assistant at the Burke Center Library. Her many nominators shared that Anita is the poster person for toddler interactive. She has the best cap classes my family has attended throughout the Fairfax County library system. She plans out her classes perfectly, knows her audience, which is very varied, and is flexible throughout the class. She engages all kids and adults with her fun toys and books. Another said, "When COVID hit, a lot of library branches either eliminated or significantly decreased the amount of in-person events. However, Anita has been able to safely offer this event consistently as a great resource for the community and especially for parents and kids who may not have many opportunities for social interaction during this time." And finally, Ms. Anita also does a fantastic job of gently maintaining order in the class for safety when needed and allowing the kids to explore and get their wiggles out. I'm always impressed by her unending patience and exuberance. Anita, I saw you here earlier. You want to say anything? Got unmute. There you go. You're muted, Anita.
Muted.
Anita, you're still muted. There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone for those wonderful, kind words. It just makes me happy and it makes me enjoy my job even more. So thanks.
Okay. Thank you. And that's, that's all I have to introduce.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Next, we go to Drainsville District, and that will be Sue Jetha.
Thank you. I'm so happy to be reading these special comments about these two ladies who are really fantastic. The first is Christine Jones, who is the branch manager for Tyson's Northern Regional Library. And of course, we all know her from her being the assistant director when, for the library, for, for the library, sorry, FCPL. Her nominator shared the following. "Two years ago, I noticed in the library newsletter that there was an award for your favorite librarian. I asked at the information desk and was told it was a national award, not specific to Fairfax County, and I thought this was something that could be initiated at our local level. I reached out to the Fairfax Library and suggested that they have this local award. I began corresponding with Christine Jones, and she spearheaded my idea. I'm so happy that it has come to fruition, and credit is due all to Christine for making the reward a reality." And I'd like to add also that in my time knowing Christine, she's just been so incredibly helpful to me. As I've said, I'm regularly remedial, and I'm very glad that she's always so helpful. Thank you very much. And the next award, I'm sorry.
Oh, we have Christine.
Christine, what am I saying? Christine, would you like to say something?
I just want to say this feels so much like cheating, because Rose Ellen was so sweet to do all of the work for this, and I'm grateful that she's here and saying hello. And I think it's very kind of the board, but it was truly very much a labor of love, and it has been really nice during the pandemic. So I will accept the cheating with gratitude. Thank you.
The next award is for Nora Wickert, who is an information assistant at the Dolly Madison Library. Her nominator said about her, "I participate in the Socrates Cafe, which Nora leads, and it has become a font of interesting discussion about philosophical issues for our gathering. Searching for truth is what we seek at our core and what libraries are all about. Her monthly art classes have given me a chance to be creative and fun, and knowledgeable, helpful, caring, with a big smile that is visible even with the mask covering her face, organizes the most creative and fun programs," which I really do have to concur. I've participated in her Socrates Cafe, and it really is a lot of fun. So congratulations to you, Nora. Would you like to say something?
Sure. Gosh, I'm reclined. Thank you so much for this award. It's, it's nice to get an award, and especially nice to get an award for doing stuff that you really love to do. And we're gonna have a pizza party at Dolly Madison for the staff, because I couldn't do it without them and their support. So I wanted to give them a kudos, too.
Next is Hunter Mill, and that would be Sheila. And so I'm gonna read her nomination, which this award is for Becky Takas, who's, I saw her, I don't see her now, but I know she's here. Anyway, part-time youth services assistant at the Reston Regional Library. And her nominee, nominators wrote that she runs the teen advisory board and makes a difference for teens by creating a warm, welcoming environment for any and all teenagers lucky enough to find themselves in her company. She is generous in her respect and kindness to all, and makes everyone feel useful and important, regardless of how long you've been at the library or your past volunteer experience, which sounds wonderful. So Becky, if you would like to say anything, we'd love to hear from you.
I'm reclined, too. I love these kids. I have my own teenagers at home, and I don't tell my own teenagers, sometimes these kids at the tab are better. They're just wonderful, they're clever, and they're engaged, and they're fabulous. So thanks.
Thank you. It's amazing service with teenagers. I couldn't do it. So thank you from me. Okay, next is Lee District.
All right, that would be me. Good evening, everyone. All right. One moment here. Okay, the nominee, the person who was nominated from Lee District, I have two. And the first is Vicki Corcoran. Can you wave so folks know who you are? Okay, very good. Vicki is a youth services info assistant at the Richard Byrd Library. Her nominator shared that Ms. Corcoran came to the rescue of our organization, Grand Involved. And if you guys do not know what Grand Involved is, it's a very, very important program in this community. And I've had some experience with it at Lewis High School. So I really appreciate that, that service there. So the nominee further says, "We recognize our many volunteers each year with a celebration that has a book theme. The theme for our celebration, love and kindness, exemplifies Ms. Corcoran's attitude towards her work. Her positive attitude, her willingness to be creative and flexible to overcome difficulties." Well, thank you very much, Vicki. And if you want to say a few words, please do.
Thanks a lot. Unmute me, sorry.
There you go.
Well, first of all, to the library board, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And I wrote notes, because I'm not good at saying things out loud unless I have them memorized for storytimes. So after I got over my initial surprise, I was really kind of overwhelmed by the significance of this award, the fact that it is done by our community members, our library customers. And really, I was just doing my job. So that's a wonderful thing to be recognized for that. But I also wanted to say, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to work with our community organization, Grand Involved. You are absolutely right. They are a wonderful group of volunteers who work with the kids in our community, in our elementary schools, high school. They just do a wonderful amount of work with them. They're wonderful, amazing, this is what I wrote down. They're wonderful, amazing, and necessary for our community and our kids. Those of you who know me, there's quite a few on here who do, you know that my heart and my energies go into working with children and providing them the most meaningful experience, especially if it's library or book related. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vicki. And you reminded me why this is my favorite board meeting of the year. Just those type of stories makes what we do very special. So thank you very much. The next person that, that we'd like to recognize from our district is Erica Tran. Can you turn your video on or say hi? Okay, there goes Erica. Very good. So bear with me here, because the nominee, the nominating person was very excited with what they wrote here. Erica Tran is a library aide at the John Marshall Library. Her many nominators said, "There are times I've brought at least 20 to 30 books at closing time. I see Erica at the checkout desk, and she's fine. I am a mother of three, very busy, and often forget my library card. She offers to help me. I know people want to go home at this late hour, and they have to stick around because of people like me, and I feel guilty about it. I appreciate the time the library staff spends with us, and especially Erica. She is very patient and helps me find my name in the system and check out all 30 books, one by one. Her attitude is very happy to help me, no problem. When I come to the library, Erica always welcomes me with a smile and offers to help. I know I'm old and picky. Since I do not come to the library as often, I ask lots of questions when I'm here. Erica is still very patient with me. She tries to answer my questions based on her knowledge and also recommends some other ideas that I may never even know, like reading books online. She introduced me to audiobooks. She showed me how to download them step by step. Boy, lots of steps, but she took all her time to help me. And the library has several shining stars on the staff who are everything you would want. Hopeful, courteous, conscientious, knowledgeable, with a love of books and learning. Erica has it all, and she made me feel like home. I got things done every time I was there. She resolves my problems. She makes my day. So thank you very much, Erica.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for this award, and this means a lot to me, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next district is Mason, and that's me. And I'm really excited to make this award to Christine Lomax from the Woodrow Wilson Library. She's a full-time page manager at Woodrow, and she has been with FCPL for 23 years, part of the time she was at Centerville. Her nominator shared that Christine is charming and excellent and goes out of her way to help in any way possible, including working every Saturday. And the nominator repeated that many times in the write-up. And it is very impressive to work every Saturday. And then her quote is, "I'm very thankful to have you there. She brings joy to me when I see her smile. I feel like I have known her for years, and thank you for this chance to put the spotlight on her." So Christine, you're in the spotlight now. If you would like to say anything. Unmute and.
Oh, I just want to say thank you. It was a shock when I heard. I thought something was wrong when Sarah said, "Check your email." But I do appreciate it, and I would like to know who did it. But I can thank them, too. But.
Somebody named Natasha on this screen, and they are having a ball.
You got a fan club.
Those are my kids. I did give them the link. Because I couldn't believe it, and I figured that they wanted, you know, to take it and believe it for me. So yes. But thank you. I do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christine. And I'll also add that Christine is, I'm pretty sure, the volunteer coordinator.
Yes.
And although it's been a while, but I do remember pre-pandemic that she throws a really good volunteer recognition party. So there you go. Maybe I'll write you up next time for that.
Well, whenever we can get a full one.
And then you'll know who it was.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything. Now we'll move on to Providence.
Yes. Hi. For Oakton Library, we have Shazia Sheri Ar. Sheri Ar. She's the page manager at the Oakton Library, and her many nominators said, "She's a woman who wears many hats, who carries much wisdom. She also knows what to say and when to say. She also, she always helps me find the book I need and goes the extra mile by finding alternative solutions if the book is checked out. She is very patient with children and does not hesitate to help customers. And she's professional, caring, and has commitment to her work and the community it serves. Always has a smile and greets everyone warmly." So congratulations, Shazia.
Thank you so much. So I'm so humbled, and I thank everyone for their support and appreciation. Thank you all for your recognition. Thanks.
And now we go to Springfield District for Phil.
Fran, I didn't get information on the people in Springfield to be able to do it. So would you be kind enough to read it? And then I would like to ask Jessica or Roberta to send me the things that I could contact them personally and thank them for what they did. Unless it was set like today, I don't, didn't get information on the people, so.
Yeah, Phil, we'll be happy to send it your way again, so you've got the contact info.
Well, why don't, and I can, we could go on to Suzanne, and I'll look up the information and do that.
Okay, thank you.
How about that? Because I have all the write-ups. Okay, so Suzanne, for Fairfax City, if you wouldn't mind.
City of Fairfax Regional Library. Official name.
Oh, that's right.
Our first award winner is Elaine McCray. She's a librarian in the Virginia Room at City of Fairfax Regional Library. Her many nominators shared that Elaine was efficient, cheerful, and knowledgeable. For my genealogy request, she performed a newspaper search for a name that had multiple spellings that complicated the research. Elaine is amazing. Whenever anyone has a question about anything having to do with Fairfax County history, Elaine goes to great lengths to find the answer. She has incredible research skills and really understands how to navigate the myriad of historic documents. And Elaine always goes above the call of duty when helping researchers. I've submitted multiple requests for articles of copies, for article copies at times. But in particular, I had an article that my mother had a copy of, but no idea what publication it appeared in. Elaine did the research to actually find the article in a folder on Annandale, so I was able to determine the date and the publication. These seemingly small steps represent her attitude of going the extra mile to help serve the public. Her attitude reflects that she really enjoys her work and helping people solve little mysteries. And I will add, I was lucky enough to work with Elaine for many years before I retired, and she is a terrific researcher. Elaine, if you'd like to say a few words?
Well, just thank you to everyone who nominated me and to the board for choosing me, and to the Virginia Room for allowing me the space to have the most fun, I think, ever in answering all these questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Elaine. Big cheers. The second nominee from the City of Fairfax is Marie Watkins. Marie is a librarian at the City of Fairfax Regional Library. Her nominator said, "After coming back from three years in India, living through the pandemic there, assisting thousands of Americans in getting back to the U.S., I was a diplomat at the U.S. Embassy, New Delhi. I retired and was looking at ways to fill my time and overcome burnout. The library came to the rescue. I found out about the unique podcast club hosted by Marie and quickly joined. I also joined the Books and Brew Club, Book Club, also hosted by Marie. She made me feel most welcome and puts up with all of us. If there's a quiet moment, she makes sure to help us by asking more questions and giving her opinion. The library has been my savior during COVID, which would not be possible without the great work and dedication of Marie Watkins, and she manages all this remotely." Marie, if you'd like to say a few words?
Well, I would like to say thank you very much to the board for this honor, and I'm really impressed to be in this kind of cohort with my fellow recipients. And I would like to thank my branch managers for helping me to manage launching the new program, which was the Podcast Club, and scheduling around the book clubs during, you know, the pandemic stress of the schedule that really, I knew that it was, it was pulling new people in, and I'm really glad to hear that it's having the desired effect.
Thank you, Marie.
Now, I'm gonna circle back to, well, I'm gonna circle back to Sully, because I skipped over Liz and went right to Fairfax City. I'm sorry. I was busy. I was trying to do too many, shuffling too many pieces of paper around here. So Liz, take it away.
Gladly. I was wondering what happened to Sully.
What happened?
And I see. And I see our honorees right here in front of me. Kelly, congratulations. Kelly Gilbert is from the Chantilly Regional Library, and she is our youth service information assistant at the library. Her many nominators shared multiple comments that were very similar. These are all in quotes. By her interactions, you can tell she generally loves her job. Kelly provides, Kelly provides fantastic children's programs. She is delightful and has beautifully imaginative approach to sharing the written word with children. Plus, I'm not sure what this is, but plus ukulele, dot, dot, dot. You must know what that means. You might share it in your comments. And quote, another quote, "She provides excellent and engaging children's programs. She has created a love of reading in my daughter." For these wonderful comments, you've been selected to represent Chantilly on the, on the selection awards, and I'll turn it over to you, Kelly. Would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, I thought I would hold it together, but I started tearing up a little bit. Thank you so much for this wonderful award. I feel genuinely honored, and it's kind of put a little lift in my step the past couple of days. So thank you very much for offering that. I play the ukulele in my storytimes. I have a fear that if I stop, I might get like a herd of children to attack me. So I have, the ukulele is now my, my trademark, I guess. And doing virtual storytimes, a lot of little ones have started getting their own ukuleles, so they play with me over Zoom. So I'm really glad that everybody likes it as much as I do. Plus, I feel like I get paid to play the ukulele every Tuesday, so that's nice.
That's great.
Thank you all so much. And I really just, yeah, I'm really honored.
Congratulations again. Kelly, just as a point on the side, my husband has a great picture of a whole wall of ukuleles. I'm going to make it a point to get your information and ship it to you, because that'd be a great background for your, your.
That would be. Thank you.
Okay. Ready for Springfield, for me to read, for Rebecca LaPlante. I apologize for, I lost again. No, here we go. All right, Rebecca, are you here tonight for this snafu thing? We're good. Okay, great. So Rebecca was nominated as, and I'm quoting, "is a dedicated employee and is extremely knowledgeable and passionate about her work. She keeps us informed on library happenings and is an incredibly valuable member of our book club." And she's the assistant branch manager at Poehic. So Rebecca, thank you. And. And she's the assistant branch manager at Poehic. So Rebecca, thank you. And if you'd like to say anything.
I don't think I can say it any better than the rest of the, uh, the groups that I'm tearing up. Um, thank you very much. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Fran, I would like to get somehow, I missed getting information and I would like to be able to contact her and thank her personally. So if Jessica or Roberta could get that to me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
You got it, Phil.
And now, um, from the school system, Priscilla is going to make one of the awards.
Good evening. I want to make sure that if I mispronounce my honoree's name, that someone corrects me because names are important. But I'm pleased to recognize Jane Gerondo as an early literacy assistant in library administration. Jane's many nominators shared that Jane comes to our Head Start classroom every other month to read to our students. They are so excited to know she is coming because Jane is so much fun. Three exclamation points. Her literacy activities are so engaging and developmentally appropriate. Our students love how she brings stories to life with her vivid storytelling using puppets, singing, dancing, counting, listening, and literacy, literacy skills. And these are just some of what's taught along with new vocabulary and critical thinking skills. But most of all, a love for books. And she makes a true impact on our students through her monthly visits. Congratulations, Jane.
Thank you very much. It's actually Gerondo, but it's okay. I get Gerondo. Gerondo. Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm very honored to receive this award and it's lovely to hear nice things said about you, isn't it, gang? I, um, and, and I, I love bringing the library out to kids in childcare centers and the Head Start classrooms. And I even visit some family childcare. So always try and, you know, I hope I'm building their early literacy schools, but most of all, I hope, but that I'm sharing my love of kids' books and I hope some of them wander into your branches. I always, my puppet always pulls a book out of my bag. And oh, we, we always say, oh, you know, when we were at, you know, City of Fairfax Library, we found this book. So anything, I'm, I'm really honored. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay. And I'm going to call on Gary, um, to recognize Rene Edwards from Admin.
Renee's not with us, uh, tonight either, but her, her absence actually is an example of her dedication to duty because she's out on the job. With so, to an author event. Renee's the programming and educational services director in library administration. She creates, uh, system program series and partnerships in both virtual and in-person formats to engage and reach the lives of our patrons across the entire, uh, scope of our large and very diverse county. Uh, her nominators shared that, uh, quote, Renee has provided diverse programming for our minority communities. Also, she has given me a voice to express myself in creative, recreational, entertaining ways. And finally, Renee creates programs that engage and invite people to participate. As I say, Renee's, uh, not with us, but, uh, congratulations.
Thank you, Gary. And I'm going to call in Jane to recognize, um, Robert, Robert Hershur from Access Services.
It is my privilege to, um, share this blurb about Mr. Hershur. Robert Hershur is a reader's advisor in the Access Services Library. His nominator shared, Rob is a reliable, honest, hardworking guy. He gives me the really great book recommendations and always asks about how I'm doing, how my family is, and what I'm doing to keep myself busy since I don't get out much. He really cares about the people he helps. You can hear it in his questions and when he picks out books. Rob is like family. In fact, I like him more than some of my family. And based on this nomination, Rob, I think I like you better than some of my family too. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for the award. To say that I'm shocked is an understatement and to be included in this talented group of people, I'm truly humbled. I just want to say that the members of our home delivery and talking book program are awesome. They have amazing life stories and so very much to share. And they're resilient. And it's my honor and pleasure to serve them and to get to know their life stories. It's really an honor. Thank you very much.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to, um, I didn't know if Jessica was gonna have any summary or anything, but, um, I just want to say how, a lot of times we talk about, uh, library services and library staff in the aggregate, and I love hearing the individual stories. Remember there was that old show about, um, the, some city that had a million stories. Um, and it's kind of like that, only those were criminal stories. So nevermind. Um, but, but it's just so, um, it's just such a wonderful thing, uh, to drill down and see what in every branch across the system, how individuals make a difference in, um, the lives of our library users and the residents of Fairfax County. So Jessica, I don't know if you had any.
I would love to. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this as well. This is the third year that the library board has held this, this nomination period and this award ceremony. And the first two years, we were kind of shocked that it was, you know, like a hundred nominations. That's amazing. And then this year we thought, you know, maybe it'll slow down a little bit. Things are good. No, 150. And there were so many unique nominations and people, when they wrote them, obviously put a lot of their own heart into it. They, our public cares so deeply about the libraries and the work that we do and the individuals that make up our libraries who actually do all the work that is happening there. It is amazing how deeply we impact the communities that we serve, whether or not you're playing a ukulele during storytime or you're helping an individual who's homebound, or you are someone who helped bring this nomination period to light. Everything that we do matters and it's just astonishing to me that we are so lucky to be able to do the work that we do for the community and that people respect it and honor it and are excited about it. And, you know, for everyone out there who says like, are libraries still relevant? You know, what's going on with libraries? That is some nonsense. Libraries are amazing. Library staff are awesome. Keep rocking it. Gay, gay F C P L staff. That's how we're going on this one.
Everybody.
Hey, everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and now we'll move on to our next presentation. Uh, and this is on, um, collection development, the collection served by our collection services, um, uh, coordinator. And, um, last month we talked a little bit about the collection and, you know, it's a really, just like staff, it's an integral part of what we do. And, um, the board is very interested in learning more about it. So tonight we have the coordinator, Dustin Brewer, who has been the coordinator for the last five years. Um, and he oversees the selection, acquisition, and, and collection management for the whole system, for all, all 23 branches. And before, um, joining F C P L, he was a subject specialist, um, at Catholic University's Mullen Library. And, um, a very interesting thing that I learned is that in 2020, he co-authored a book on Anglo-Saxon and medieval history research, which is really a far cry from the public library, but a fascinating, um, little tidbit to know about someone. So it's my pleasure to introduce Dustin and welcome you to the board meeting. We're really looking forward to hearing from you.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna try to share the presentation here and Diane Cohen's gonna start off with a little bit of background information. Let's see. Think everybody's seeing that now?
Hmm, yes.
Right, Diane?
Um, hi, everyone. Uh, my name is Diane Cohen and I am the Division Director for Technical Operations, which includes, um, Collection Services Department, which does the collection development as well as our cataloging services, which gets everything, um, assigned metadata and, um, shelf ready so that they can be found, um, in our collection, uh, in, in our stacks. So, um, the Collection Services staff was asked to put together, um, submit information regarding book challenges. And here you can see the numbers from 2020 for challenges that were actively tracked by A L A. Now, according to a January article on bookriot.com, nearly half of US states have censorship bills introduced during this legislative session. That impacts schools, school libraries, as well as public and academic libraries. And just last month, Art Spiegelman's Pulitzer Prize-winning graphic narrative, um, mouse, uh, that depicts the horrors of the Holocaust was banned in Tennessee due to its use of profanity. Now, this next word cloud shows the challenge reasons in 2020. The larger the word, the higher the frequency of the complaint. So naturally, as an informed board, um, y'all would want to know more about how this nationwide trend is impacting us here locally. These types of challenges and bans have a chilling effect on those here and nationally who select and work with books as part of their profession. Uh, those who have spent so much time and effort, um, on the education that is required to do their job. Uh, here at Fairfax County, a master's degree is the minimum requirement for this level of work. But despite what we're seeing, uh, in the schools and public libraries across the US, we are not yet seeing this immediate impact of these challenges manifest as formal book reconsideration requests here at F C P L. Now, I believe this is due to, uh, a highly diverse and well-read community. I believe it's due to our well-trained and very knowledgeable professional staff. I believe it's due to our board policies, including policy S, which is, um, directly on point regarding the recommendations of current and potential library materials. And I believe it's also due to the solid internal procedures that we have for both recommendations and reconsiderations. Dustin, who you were just introduced to by Fran, is here to tell you more about the history and the current state of collection inquiries and challenges here at Fairfax County Public Library. Dustin?
So the policy S that Diane mentioned is the board policy that, uh, it governs both the selection process and kind of the, the challenge process that we have. Uh, the key, uh, phrasing in there is that the choice of library materials by user is an individual matter. And, you know, customers are free to read what they wish, but customers are not free to censor what, uh, other customers have access to. And recognizing that a diverse material, uh, diversity of material may result in some requests for reconsideration. F C P L maintains a collection development handout and procedures for ensuring that objections are, uh, handled in a consistent manner. And what I'm going to do, I'll go over the process laid out that we use for when we get these, uh, reconsideration requests and kind of how we, how we move through that. Uh, the process, which is, it's in the collection development handbook that we have available. There's some sort of initial inquiry, complaint, feedback. Uh, there's an initial response, a conversation where the customer is provided with the information of how to, uh, file a reconsideration request and kind of what, what will happen next. Um, the formal request goes through, uh, there are staff reviews, a decision is made, and then the customer receives that decision and is given appeal options. So the initial inquiry can come from just about anywhere. Um, a lot of them are, you know, it, it's a customer coming up to a service desk in a branch and, you know, bringing an item to their attention, saying that there's some, they have some issue with the item, that it's, um, you know, it has bad language in it. It is content that's not appropriate. Um, and it can either be kind of a, you know, a question or a complaint, or you're just basically letting people know that there's something that they might need to be aware of. We do get them in the form of phone calls, uh, either to a branch or to library administration or technical operations. A lot of them start as emails that come in, um, again, through various, uh, public facing channels. Uh, we do get sometimes, uh, through social media responses. Someone will bring something up or someone will, uh, address the library directly in that way. And historically, we have gotten some, uh, in the form of written notes. Uh, sometimes unsigned notes tucked inside books, but just kind of they, some method of communicating between customers and, uh, and staff. And those initial communications, that's customer feedback. We, we get a lot of customer feedback on a lot of different things, uh, both positive and negative. And this is all part of that kind of cycle and, uh, open communication channels we have with our customers. The response, uh, usually it's whoever is fielding that initial question, particularly if it's in person, because that's, uh, who's having the discussion at that point. The first step is to kind of go over what our policies are about what's in the collection and kind of how we classify things, what audience levels we consider, what age groups for juvenile material, for teen material. A reiteration of some of those statements from policy S, uh, you know, essentially saying that we collect for a very, uh, broad variety of customers who some may find things more interesting than others or have different levels of what they, uh, would consider offensive. The customer has offered a copy of the blue book, the F C P L collections guideline, which go over what we consider when we're selecting and also do lay out the process of a formal reconsideration, as well as having some statements from, uh, American Library Association, uh, freedom of reads, uh, freedom to read statement. And then they're, explain what the next steps are if they do want to move forward with a formal reconsideration. And that, you know, a lot of times the process ends there. The customer is either satisfied that the staff have explained the policies and they understand why we have, what we have in the collection. Or even if they're still bothered by it, they choose not to move forward with reconsideration because they don't really want to, not necessarily, they, they didn't necessarily want it to be removed from the collection. They just want people to be aware that maybe it should be. The formal reconsideration process begins with a letter or an email. It doesn't have to be an actual letter. But it has to identify the specific issues that the customer has with the item. So that's for a couple of reasons. One is to make sure that we understand exactly what the, the concern is. And so that we can then respond to that. And so that we know that the concern is that it's not just, you know, I, I didn't like this book. It should be removed from the collection. Or I disagree with this book. It should be removed from the collection. We have to know why they feel that it, uh, that there's something wrong with it that we need to redo it. Once that happens, the customer gets an initial response, basically letting them know what the next steps are and giving them an estimated timeline. Depending on the length and audience of the work, uh, that timeline can be a little different. You know, if it's a picture book, those can be reviewed relatively quickly. Uh, you know, a novel's going to take longer. So the, it's not a set timeline for everything, but we do try to stay within four weeks, six weeks maximum, um, depending on when we can schedule getting, getting reviews done. At that point, this coordinator appoints three professional librarians to review the material. Uh, we select people based on, you know, the matching the, the genre or the audience with the appropriate staff for that. So if it's a children's book, generally, uh, youth, uh, librarians are going to be selected for that. If it's an adult book, people who have particular interest or expertise in a genre or topic would be selected for that. The, uh, Collection Services then provides a packet to each reviewer that includes things like external reviews, uh, publisher material, um, other libraries that have it and how it's classified in other libraries. A lot of times the publishers or the vendors will give a recommendation for age groups and things like that. So that the, the librarians writing the reviews then have some, some guidelines to know kind of what to look for. They know what, what's out there in the kind of wider world around that material for them to look at. And they're also provided with the specific, uh, you know, the, whatever the customer brings up as the, the specific objection so that they know what to respond to. So the reviews are written, uh, the reviewers are, it, it's done by professional librarian level staff. Their reviews are asked to consider the customer's specific concerns, but also to evaluate the overall value and appropriateness of the material for the collection. So they're, they're not just necessarily looking at, you know, uh, there's bad language on page 26. They're looking at the, the work as a whole and to determine if the, the value of the work is there. And then they make recommendations on whether the items should be routine, removed, or in some cases reclassified. By reclassified, generally that's you're moving it from a youth to a teen or teen to adult or something like that. If it's determined that the, uh, level isn't really appropriate for the audience where it's classified. Now, at that point, the decision is made by the Collection Services Coordinator, which in this case is me. But. But using those reviews, you know, so the reviews generally, you know, if there's, if there's a disagreement, if it's a two-to-one or something like that, generally, the Collection Services Coordinator will decide to go with the majority, but not always. It doesn't have to be that way, as long as the review material is considered. That decision is then communicated to the customer. That is a letter that goes back to them, indicating our decision, our reasoning behind it, and generally includes some quotes from the staff reviews that were written, so that the customer understands why the decision was made that it was. That letter, typically, it either comes from Collection Services, or it comes through a branch manager. If the original complaint came through a branch, then that branch manager would compose the letter and write it back to the customer. At that point, that decision letter, along with the initial customer request, are kept in our files. So we have a historic record of, you know, what challenges have come up and what decisions were made, so that we can, we can honor that process and make sure that we don't, you know, forget that something was removed and add it back to the collection or something like that. So we do have a record of that, so we know what in the past has been has been brought up for reconsideration. At that point, after the customer receives that final decision, they may appeal that decision to the library director. If they are still unsatisfied, a secondary appeal can be made to the Library Board of Trustees. As far as I know, I've been here for five years and I've looked through our files back to about 1996 or so. I can't find any evidence that that has happened. Perhaps those who have been around the system longer may have more information on that, but it's definitely rare if it has happened at all, that I wasn't able to find any evidence that it has been appealed to the library director or beyond. So talking a little bit about the recent challenges at Fairfax County. In terms of formal challenges, we have very few. Looking at, you know, what I've gone through the files of, we average about one per year. Since I've been here, I think we've had four. So we really aren't getting a lot of these, we're not seeing a flurry of reconsideration requests coming in. We do get a lot of feedback, positive and negative, about the collection. And that comes in much more commonly, probably a few times a month, something will come to Collection Services, to Technical Operations. A customer who is bringing up questions or problems with a particular item in the collection. Most of those inquiries are satisfied with that kind of that initial response from staff, just talking about what our policies are and kind of some reasoning as to why we may have added that to the collection, or why it is in the collection where it is. Our staff are very knowledgeable about this. They're very eager to engage with customers. They want to make sure that customers understand things and are satisfied with it. So really, very few of these reach the level where the customer then feels the need to actually, you know, ask the library to renew the item from the collection. In terms of what gets challenged at Fairfax County Public Library, the majority of the challenges that have come in, you know, in the past couple decades have been for youth material. That's not surprising, looking at kind of national trends and what people have questions about. And it makes sense that, you know, particularly parents would be more concerned with what's available for children than kind of what's available in the general adult collection. The primary issue has been kind of a general blanket of age appropriateness. That can be bad language, violence, sexual depictions, or depictions of homosexuality. There have also been some for usage of racial epithets, particularly in older works, and, you know, kind of racist depictions. And we've been asked to look at some of those in the past. As graphic novels have become a bigger part of our collection, we collect graphic novels for children, teens, and adults. There have been challenges to various graphic novels. The fact that these are now, you know, instead of words, it's pictures, that's not really surprising, that there's a different threshold for kind of what people are comfortable with in picture form as compared to words. So we have received some on those. We get not so much reconsideration, but we get questions and kind of challenges, complaints about political books. That's typically, it's, you know, due to either books that are kind of questionable, truthfulness, we'll say, or things that are considered to be extreme views on one side or the other, and customers objecting to those being in the collection. And the last category that we see, again, not a lot of formal complaints, but we get questions about is our addition of non-English material to the collection. Those are usually centered around the idea of, you know, whether it's appropriate to have non-English material in a public library, and whether it's appropriate to spend money on that type of material. So if anybody has any questions on that, we would be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
So I'm looking at the gallery, so I'm going to try to identify people who have their hand up, and Brian will help me. And I think Sue Jata is the first person I heard, then I think I see, let me write it down. Gary has his hand up, and Keith and Liz.
I have mine, too.
Okay, great. So Sue Jata, go ahead.
I don't know if I missed, if you'd said this, but has anything actually been removed when you did your analysis, when you went back, things have been removed from after that full review process?
It's rare, but yes, things do get removed. You know, I consider the reconsideration process, it's it's part of the selection process. It's not a bug, it's a feature. It's something where, you know, we rely on customer feedback and staff feedback in a lot of cases, to let us know when there are things of questionable qualities in the collection. Since I have been here, we did remove one item because it was a juvenile biography of Thurgood Marshall that had racist language in it, in telling a story about his childhood. And it was also from, I think, 1991 or something like that. So we only have one copy left. At that point, we agreed that it was outdated. It should not be in the collection any longer. We had newer material, and in the newer youth material on that subject, it told the same story but didn't use the language. So, you know, in that case, it was very appropriate for the customer to bring that to our attention, and we did remove it.
Thank you.
Now, was Gary, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
I wanted to raise an issue that mainly for the benefit of the public that might be listening in. And Justin and Diane can respond if you'd like. But that is, censorship is really a two-sided coin. The one side that we've talked about has to do with the purchase, display, and promotion of material that someone objects to. And that's what we've talked about. And from the statistics, it's refreshing to hear that doesn't look to be too much of a problem in the county. The other side could also be a problem, and that is to not purchase, display, or promote items that someone may find beneficial. And again, I'm not suggesting there's a problem, but I think it's important to recognize, and maybe you could respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that that's a concern, kind of the censorship by omission type of thing. It is something that we actively look at. We try to find material that maybe isn't getting requests, but would be, you know, would show something that we don't have in the collection. I mean, that is something that we try to do. It can be difficult to identify material that is appropriate to add in those cases, but, I mean, it's not, it is something we think about. I mean, I personally buy a whole bunch of stuff that I would never read, because it has a place in the collection, even though it's of no interest to me. So, I mean, I think that is something, it's a concern that I have, because I think it is something that can be a little bit of a blind spot sometimes, to not really, you know, we're not consciously doing it, but are there areas that we're ignoring? And, you know, one of the things, we do use customer requests as a big thing to kind of cast a wide net, things that we might be missing, but customers are asking for and would find useful, to make sure that those get into the collection as well.
I'll echo everything Dustin said. That's where I talked about the chilling effect that this has, and that's the not selecting something because you worry that it might be challenged. I think that that is not as much of a concern here in our particular county and with our particular library board and director and administration, because we do have a lot of support, and we have a highly diverse community who expects a certain level of service from us. And so I don't think we have some of the same challenges that might, as many of the same challenges as deeply felt as might be in other areas.
Not to go into a lot of detail, but could you say, how do you go about looking at books to buy or not? You know, you don't get a list of every book that's probably, the library at Congress has a great situation. In order to get a copyright, you got to give them two freebies. And so they have every book that's ever copyrighted in the United States. How do you go about looking at what's available and deciding what to buy?
Yeah, in brief, we pull in as many streams as we can. You know, vendors and publishers are, you know, very eager to, you know, have us buy things from them, so they let us know what they have. We follow various, you know, traditional and new social media-type streams to see what's out there. Like I said, requests are a big part of it. Yeah, I mean, certainly, we are not aware of every book that's published, but we we try to make sure that we're monitoring those various places to see when things pop up that may be of interest.
Yeah, as one of our selectors said, anything is fodder for being part of the, you know, for being chosen into the collection. Any stream is available, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Keith.
Yeah, my question's pretty simple, and I'm trying to get an idea of the increase in the number of challenges over the past two years. Are you guys tracking that data?
We keep track of the formal challenges, the reconsiderations. The kind of the informal complaints, inquiries, feedback, we don't count them. So, I mean, we have not seen an increase, you know, in the past two years at all. I think a lot of that is, what's being reported, a lot of it is in, at the school districts, more so than the public libraries. But from what I can tell, there, again, I've been looking through all the files that predate me significantly. There have been times where there have been little flurries, where, you know, multiple things will be challenged right in a row, or even the same book will be challenged by multiple people at the same time, but we have not seen anything like that recently.
All right, thank you.
If I could follow up, for the demonstration of Dolly Madison, then did that not result in any formal complaints? It was just?
No, no formal complaints came from that.
All right, great, thanks.
Can I ask or make a comment?
A comment? Well, no, you'll be next. I'll put your name down, but you have to wait. Liz is next.
I'm in a place that I don't have good connection, and I keep getting kicked out.
It's okay, I'll defer to Phil, Fran, so.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Phil.
The only comment I would like to make is, as we choose books for the library, you know, try to have a balance with it. Let's just use the political thing, you know, there's the liberal perspective, and then there's the conservative perspective. And there ought to be not necessarily equal, but if, you know, we have a lot of books that, let's say, support the progressive or the liberal agenda, there ought to be a reasonable number of books that, you know, espouse the opposite, like, you know, one issue that is out there is, you know, like climate control. So everybody's concerned by climate control, but there's another point of view on climate control. And whatever that point of view is, it ought to be available for people to live or read. So I would just like to be sure we try to have a balance and not, on any subject, hone in on, you know, one specific point of view or one specific topic in exclusion of the other point of view. That's all I said. At some point, I may get cut off here, because like I keep getting, keep going out, and then I keep getting reconnected, I'm not sure why, but I'm not in my house, that's why. So thank you for allowing me to make the comment.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Any response?
I mean, I agree. I think that it is important to try to balance perspectives and provide information. I mean, one thing I'll say is, the demographics of the county and what people are requesting is going to tip that in one direction, because that's where the requests come in, and that's where the circulation is. And that is something that, you know, we want to keep it, we want to provide options for people to have alternative viewpoints, but we're going to buy the material that's popular, just to support that circulation and give customers what they're asking for.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Liz, now.
I was just wondering, what was, what would be the response to somebody who would be complaining about having non-English books in our libraries? I know what I would personally say, but I wanted to hear more from an official, Jessica, Diane, or Dustin, the response. So maybe if I'm off, I could be more in sync with it.
My response is similar to a response to a lot of things that are challenged, is that we collect for residents of Fairfax County for their informational and educational needs, whatever those may be. And, you know, many, many residents prefer to read things in Spanish, whether they can read English or not. It's not a question of one or the other. And, you know, again, looking at language demographics, you know, our Spanish collection is woefully small compared to the number of Spanish speakers we have in the county.
I would tag on to that, that part of the library's job is to follow county priorities and county goals that are set by the board supervisors, of which language access happens to be one right now. The advertised fiscal year '23 budget includes additional dollars to support language access coordination across many agencies, doing things like translating documents, and even as recent as the Channel 16 broadcast of the board supervisor meetings, now simulcast in Spanish. So it's our obligation to not only ensure that we are supporting all of our residents, but we're also mimicking those board priorities with our services.
I don't need to add anything to what they've said.
Great, okay. Brian, I think you had your hand up, right?
I did earlier, but my question was the same as Sue Jata's first one. She always beats me to it.
Anybody else have any?
Sue Jata has her.
Again?
I have a question. I have a question, a follow-up question for Dustin, based on Phil's comment. So I'm wondering how, like you mentioned earlier in your presentation about that, you know, one of the issues being like very truthfulness of materials. So, for example, I think that Phil was saying climate control, I'm assuming he means climate change or climate catastrophe or whatever, climate crisis. There is the truthful side of that, and then there's a whole lot of other sides of that. So are we, do we keep, when you're making collections for, you know, does both sides of that get, I mean, I would imagine, like, they're not really two sides of climate crisis, oncoming climate crisis. So how do you, that particular thing, when Phil said it, I wanted to make sure that I had got the answer to that?
Yeah, I mean, we try as best we can to validate the sources of the material, you know. We rely on the fact that, you know, it is somewhat complicated to get things published by, you know, significant publishers, and, you know, there are sort of kind of gatekeepers there. We look at reviews, we look at what information we have available, we look at the authority and qualifications of the authors. And so we do try. It can be a problem on things where we don't necessarily know, you know, if the material is trustworthy and it's difficult to. you know, if the material is trustworthy and it's difficult to find reviews. Um, but, you know, we we definitely, we we don't want to, you know, bring in in material that is, you know, has incorrect information in it. Um, you know, just to balance a point, um, you know.
That's what I, that's what I actually, that's exactly what I wanted to know that.
Yeah, I mean, there there's certainly there are questions about kind of bias and things like that, and, you know, I think biased information is different than intentionally misleading information. Um, so it's, it's, we have to be careful with it.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer.
Anybody else? Alright, uh, I want to thank you. I think that was a really excellent um presentation and also a question and answer period, and I just wanted to add that I've been attending a few of the school board meetings. Um, just kind of to see what what continues to go on there um, with the Striden um, objector, this little, this massive little group of people. Um, and, and also, just in case it were to come to our board to sort of be prepared for their tactics and the way they um, um, attack the collections in the school libraries and what's going on. So, um, I'm glad for us to be prepared. Um, and, you know, Liz, I thought that was great, like to be ready if someone asks you, you know, you're walking around and somebody hey, you're a you're a trustee, what about this book and what about that book? And um, so a- all all the things that educate us on um, I'd like to say the depth of knowledge that goes into the work that we do. I mean, we did, we had great service awards tonight, and that's also a reflection too of the depth of knowledge and training of our staff and the way that um, that that they do their job. And I think it's always great for us to be educated on that. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think we all did. So, anybody else?
Thank you, Dustin, and thank you, Diane.
Alright, thank you. And now we'll move on to um, the agenda. You know, we haven't really even started on that, so let's get going. Okay. So, the first thing, the library board, um, wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It is our policy to hear a maximum of ten speakers at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. A thirty-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up, and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to pre-register with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, the remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members will listen, but not question or respond to speakers. The trustees appreciate the effort required to speak to the board, however. Uh, tonight, there are no registered speakers. If anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, please call the director's assistant at seven oh three three two four eight three two four. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the minutes. Uh, I trust you've all had a chance to read the February minute, and um, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I moved to accept the minute.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second? Looking, I'm looking, Suzanne, you. Yeah, is there any discussion? No, if not, I will call a question. Um, all those in favor accepting the minutes, please signify by raising your hand saying yes. And anyone opposed? No, okay. Thank you, the minutes are um, accepted. Chairs report, I do not have a report uh, tonight, and so I will move on to committee reports. And the first one is um, the Outreach Committee, Jameis Scavitch, if you have a report.
Um, Jessica and I are valiantly trying to wrestle a meeting date to the ground. So, please keep your eye out for an email from Jessica, if she hasn't already sent one today. Um, asking for April availability. Please respond once you see that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Foundation Report, Liz, if you have a a report today, tonight.
Yes, I do. We had a foundation meeting yesterday of the board, and most of the uh, topic was around fundraising and budgets. And um, they have the same calendar year that we do. Uh, they've raised a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars so far, and they're short a hundred and thirty thousand. So, you can imagine, and they have till the end of June to try to um, uh, get those donations. So, that took up a lot of our discussions because they uh, are working on a more formal process of strategic planning, uh, doing SWOT analysis, um, things like that. But the the bulk of the meeting had to do with um, some events that are coming up and the need for donations to um, meet their their budgets. So, um, I'm going to appeal to all of you on the board, if you are able to uh, provide a donation. Uh, they would probably welcome that with a great big smile. Um, but they do have some fundraising things. Uh, the other thing that was of interest is that um the chair, Patty Reed of the Foundation, she will be stepping down this year, so they are looking at internally for a new chair. And I think there's one or two openings that are going to be on the board that they're looking for talent. And so if you have anybody that you think would be great in in the foundation role, which is a lot of fundraising and outreach into the community, uh, please don't hesitate to get me their information and their names, and I will pass it on. Um, uh, again, the fundraising that they talked about is, we're right now looking for sponsors for the cinema in the community events. There will be three this summer. The first one will be May the tw- the twenty-first. And um, uh, the sponsorship is anywhere from like thirty thousand to five hundred. But if somebody uh, is willing to put up twenty-five thousand dollars before the end of the month, um, they will get five thousand dollars off that thirty thousand. Um, so anyway, they're looking for sponsors for the cinemas. And there's going to be an author event, a fundraiser um, uh, with David Baldacci um, on May the twelfth, that they're working aggressively on, uh, for a location, to set prices, et cetera. Uh, they had one, I guess, several years ago, and it was quite popular. Can't remember what kind of a writer he is, an author, Mysteries or, I don't remember, I don't know. Anyway, sorry about that.
Mysteries, and he's a member of Oakland Friends, he lives there.
And he, thank you, uh, Brian. Uh, the other thing is, the Scholarship Committee met, and they had sixteen applications uh, for undergraduate um, uh, scholarships or awards. And all sixteen were um, uh, awarded. That was really neat, that they had that kind of um, ability to do that. And they've added a new system where uh, an applicant can apply online. And out of the sixteen applications, fifteen were online applications. They're very pleased with that. Uh, I think that is it in terms of my report. I don't know whether Fran or Jen- Jessica, if you think that left something major off.
Nope, I think it was, that was fine. Thank you very much, Liz. Uh, the next committee report is Finance, and that's Keith Fox.
Hello, alright, um. The uh, county executive released their budget on uh, February second, uh, Finance. I'm sorry, February twenty-second, and the Finance Committee met on March second, um, where we got an update from Jessica and Sandra um, on the uh, on the proposed budget. Um, essentially, um, it, the proposed budget in summary, and I'll probably get some uh, some feedback from Jessica if I didn't say enough about it, but in summary, um, the property taxes in the county are going to be raised. Um, so, um, it, this is a proposed budget at this point, and they'll probably be looking for ways to um, to identify ways to uh, reduce costs. Um, one thing that was in there, um, uh, in the proposed budget was an investment in staff, and we believe that um, uh, what was, what was mentioned was that uh, anticipating a four-point zero-one percent market rate adjustment um, for our staff, which is great, um, as well as pay for performance and longevity increases. So, we thought this was really good. Um, and overall, um, I'd probably mentioned before, uh, three of our asks from earlier, um, to be put in the budget, were not put in the budget. Um, and so, um, just as a follow-up, um, the committee decided that we would still um, ask for one of the items other than three, and if you guys recall, um, the three items that we asked for was um a probably in the right order here. The, the tempor- or the um, I'm probably saying this wrong, but uh, a social worker position um, was one. Um, the other was the expansion of the library hours, and the third item was um, trying to increase our budget to meet um, our our percentage of materials that we were trying to meet as a goal. Um, essentially, um, so we're, uh, because of that, um, Fran is scheduled to speak um, uh, during the public hearing on the budget on our behalf. Um, we've agreed uh, to put together a letter to be sent to Chairman McKay um, to 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 thank the uh, board of supervisors, um, and applaud them for their hard work and um, uh, again, talk about uh, the great thing with with regards to the investment in our own staff. But we're also going to um, to ask them, again, just to stay on the record that we really want um, full support to fully fund um, our library collection, um, as part of our, as part of the board's policy. Um, selection materials, on selection materials, twenty percent of the library's budget, um, it should go towards materials. And right now, um, we're at about ten percent, and I think that's from the maneuvering and transferring of monies um, that we do to um, try to get to ten percent. So, anyway, uh, basically, the point is that that's still an ask and a request, and and as a follow-up, uh, an additional action item, so we talked about what what Fran's gonna do, we talked about um, what, uh, the letter we're gonna send to Chairman McKay. But in addition to that, um, I think individually, we can all um, attend our local supervisor budget meetings um, and and speak on behalf of um, our our requests. Um, I know that a few of the districts have already had meetings, and there's um, seven districts have not had their um local meetings yet, so there's an opportunity um, to speak on behalf, and I'll be happy to circulate um, some notes. Um, and I think we could probably circulate our letter at this point, um, since uh, I I've kind of given my approval, and and Fran has given hers also, um, so I think that we're good to probably share that. Anything to add, Jessica?
So, the only thing I can add is that at yesterday's board supervisor meeting, they discussed and approved a a maximum rate for the property tax. Um, it's not final, it's just the maximum that they can do as part of the budget. And that is a flat rate of the current one-point-one-four on the hundred of assessed value. Chair McKay, as part of his newsletter he sent out last night, indicated that he is going to strongly support decreasing the property tax rate. They only kept it at that flat rate as a as a maximum and to give some discussion space. So, um, the major jump that many homeowners in Fairfax County are seeing right now is due to an increase in property assessments. So, they're hoping to combat that if they do vote to decrease it by dropping the rate. Um, so that'll play out somewhere in there. The county executive left eighty million dollars in the budget for the boards to finesse either to support decreasing that rate, um, while maintaining a a budget that's been proposed or to fund additional priority areas. So, that will play out through those local district budget meetings, through the full board supervisor budget hearings, which are April twelfth through the fourteenth, and then as they adopt a budget in May.
Okay, and I'd just like to add that Brian will be joining me in the hot seat of um, presenting to the board of supervisors.
I will.
I think that's right, yes. Okay, great, thank you, committee chairs, and now we'll move on to the director's report, so Jessica. Oh, I'm sorry, Suzanne, thank you.
Sorry, Fran, do you want us to come and sit behind you the day you are going to um, speak?
If you, if you want to. It's around five o'clock, I think. Isn't that right, Jessica? It's like around?
Fran, will you let us know the date?
Yeah, just email us the date and time again.
Yeah, so Fran, Fran is scheduled to speak as part of the public budget hearings on Tuesday, April twelfth. She is speaker number nineteen. And if people are speaking as an individual, they get three minutes. If they're speaking on behalf of an organization, they get five minutes. And of course, some people are unable to attend or uh, go a little long or things like that. So, we've estimated Fran will be up sometime like five, five-fifteen-ish. Because the budget hearing starts at four o'clock that day. Um, anyone who wants to is welcome to attend the public budget hearings. Do allow in-person participation. Uh, some people may choose to submit video testimony through a YouTube submission or something writing, but you you can come in person. So, anyone who wants to, I'll send a follow-up with that date and time tomorrow as well.
Okay, thank you.
And the same, um, so Brian and it's good, Patty from the Foundation is also gonna speak and Brian, and I think that's it. Isn't it? And we're right around.
We don't have Brian signed up?
Oh, I thought we did. Oh, okay, sorry.
No, just Patty. I used to do it back in the olden.
Yeah.
Patty gets it.
That's why, okay, sorry, I misspoke on that. Just trying to spread the joy, you know. Okay, great, so now we'll move on to the director's report.
Sure. So, as part of your packet, I included just a few little updates, including the fact that while we had originally anticipated that you all would be attending the March twenty-second board supervisor meeting to receive a proclamation for National Library Week, the the board supervisors is really interested in pushing those back out into community readings so that it's got a wider reach. Uh, and in support of that, you all will be hearing a message from Chair McKay and potentially some other members of the board supervisors at your April library board meeting, as well as receiving your proclamation then. And you'll be getting some additional updates from me before National Library Week about goings on. And you probably also read that the county has transitions. Now that we're in the CDC's new community levels, we're at low at this point in time. So, as you visit libraries, you may see some people who are choosing to be unmasked, some people are choosing to be masked. It's entirely up to individual interests at this point and their their um, health and well-being. Uh, the plexiglass in our facilities will likely stay up for the foreseeable future. We haven't had any updates about that. But the county is going to continue to monitor and see how things go. Um, under the new guidelines, if we remain in low or moderate status, masking is optional. But if the county transitions back to high status, uh, we may move back to a place where masking is required. So, just heads up on that.
Jessica, may I ask a question? This, this implies to me that next month's meeting is gonna be live.
Um, that is TBD at this point. So, you all are still meeting in a virtual format based on the county's local state of emergency. And that state of emergency has been in place for a while now, and it could be removed and revoked at any point in time.
Well, yeah, I suspect over the next month it will go away. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't I don't have any update yet, but we're we're keeping a pretty close eye on it, and as soon as we hear that it's gone um, because of the permanent FOIA standards, virtual, entirely virtual meetings are not allowable when there is not a local or state of emergency cleared. So, as much as folks really enjoy virtual meetings for the the convenience, uh, it is not something that we can just say like, yeah, let's keep doing it. But the board supervisors and many of your other colleague board authorities and commissions are very, very interested in continuing to allow this opportunity, not only for the convenience, but because it tends to increase public participation for folks who maybe hadn't been able to get to places uh, where meetings were being held previously. There's been some work that's going on through the statewide FOIA council. They recommended legislation for this year um, to modify uh, the the statutes in Virginia, which potentially would have allowed for more opportunities for fully virtual meetings. It got scuttled in one of the houses, it got killed in the other, and then brought back, and then it's just kind of sitting. So, it seems unlikely that anything is gonna change at the statewide level this year, unfortunately.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I also included some information about our Fall for the Book Spring Headliner Event with Mr. Towles, the author of The Lincoln Highway and a Gentleman in Moscow. We've got him queued up for an April in-person event at the Sherwood Center in the city of Fairfax. So, if you are interested in attending, please do let Bobby and I know, and we will get you signed up for that. The only other big update I wanted to make sure and remind you all of is, we're currently operating all of our facilities under modified hours. We are still closed on Sundays and Mondays, and we have, um, we had planned to go back to normal hours the week of spring break for FCPS, so the week of April third. That remains unchanged. We will be going back to normal hours. That remains unchanged. We will be going back to normal hours that week. So three and a half, four weeks from now, we will be back to six days a week of service at our community locations and seven at our regionals. I'm not going to say that we've made a ton of progress in filling our vacancies, but we have gotten past the Omicron quarantining, isolating surge. So we, we, we will get back to normal hours. Many staff are ready for that, to get back to their normal, their normal schedules. And many members of our public are very excited that we will have those Sunday, Monday hours back again soon. So just around the corner, we'll be slightly back to normal.
Excuse me, Jessica?
Yeah.
You said the week of April the third will start the normal hours?
Yeah, April third is the first Sunday that will be reopened again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's all I've got to share for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Now it's time for roundtable, so I'm just, rather than look at the gallery and try to pick out people, I'm just going to read the, your district names, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go reverse.
Hey Fran, could I, could I go?
I'm gonna call on Phil first.
And it keeps kicking me out. Do you mind if I do that?
I was gonna call on you first. You, you anticipated that. Go ahead.
Two things, I thought, being a member of boards, you know, we're supposed to commit to, to the foundation. So unless Jessica tells me I can't do this, I'm willing to match the two highest numbers that our board puts in. Whatever that number is, I'll match that as a contribution to the foundation, because it's important for us to support this thing. You know, a number of us attended the last time they had the live event, and you know, I bought a number of things that I didn't need just to be supportive of it. So if I'm not inappropriate to do that, I'd like to leave you with that. I, I appreciated the, the gentleman with the presentation, because I thought that was very interesting. So I thank you. Like, this is my phone kept kicking me in and out, so I missed a little bit of it. So thank you all, and I'll look forward to talking to you or emailing you over the next few weeks. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. And now Liz from Sully. I'm going off the list.
Thank you, Phil. The foundation really will appreciate that. I don't know whether you're going to say any contributions that they've done for this cycle, for this fiscal year, or is it like right now in terms of anybody from the library board? Are you still with us, Phil?
He's gone, Liz.
Okay, I'll write in privately and see if I can get some of the rules around it, and we'll send it out, because I certainly will want to take advantage of it. The other thing is, I just want to, again, thanks to the speaker for this evening, speakers, Diane and Dustin especially. I've signed up for the virtual, what is it called? The virtual reality? Was it Traveling While Black or something close to that? I've signed up for that, and I look forward to that. And I'm sending out all kinds of emails to people that I'm acquainted with advertising that, because I think there's a lot of openings still. So I think it's going to be until like the third, no, maybe the second of April. So there's still time for people to take advantage of that program, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Priscilla?
Thank you, everybody. Fran, thank you for coming to school board meetings. If anyone else is interested in attending a school board meeting, there's one I could recommend, which is March twenty-fourth. That is when our school board will be recognizing the school librarians of Fairfax County Public Schools and the work that they do along with our library program. So that's seven o'clock on March twenty-fourth at Luther Jackson Middle School. You'll see me there and some lovely librarians. I just wanted to also continue to share my appreciation of all the wonderful staff that had, you know, had their moment and spotlighted today. And also just know that the staff as a whole is just really exceptional. Every time I know my personal journey in the public library system, I'm just so appreciative of everything that, that people do. And so thank you for having the opportunity that we can highlight a few members.
Thank you. Gary Malvernun?
I just wanted to mention that the eBooks committee is going to meet on, let's see, it's March thirty-first at three-thirty.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mason District, Fran, okay. I tried out Canopy, and I made up my list, but I have a complaint. Because do I get five items no matter how long they are, like some of the thirty-minute courses? And that, that counts as one? Okay.
I believe when I read the rules when I signed up, it said something about the courses were free.
Great course, great courses, and the children's catalog are unlimited.
Yeah, yeah, those are unlimited.
So that won't count against me, okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Okay, Lee District?
I have no comment tonight. Just have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Hunter Mills, Sheila Sun here, Drainsville, Sujatha.
I also downloaded or tried out Canopy. I didn't try it out. I just got Canopy, and I'm like trying to make my selections because I love the great courses, and I haven't, I, we had it a long time ago when my kids were small. We used to listen to stuff in the car. And so I haven't done this in a long time. I haven't had it. I'm so excited. And I just actually pulled it up while I could look and see, because really, what a wonderful thing, and unlimited great courses? People just don't even know. Once they see, they don't even know. And I want to thank the presentation, Diana, a big fan of Diane, and I'm a big fan of Dustin. Really great presentation, super interesting to hear what you guys are, how you guys do this, what the plan is, that you already have a protocol in place, and that you're ready for whatever we may see in the coming days. Thank you very much.
All right, next city of Fairfax, Suzanne.
I wanted to thank Jessica for arranging for us to go see the Traveling While Black exhibit. It was just mind-blowing, and if you haven't gotten a chance, it really is worth the trip down to Sherwood to see it. And I've been trying to share it with various people I know who I think would appreciate it. And I want to thank Jessica for working to get this for the library system to share. And I also wanted to say that it's really frustrating, because I've got so many books I want to read, and I keep going to all these great online library programs. And in the last month, I, besides the trip to Sherwood last week, there was a program on the Green Book at George, and another one on the CCC camps in Fairfax County. And there's so many more, so I would just encourage you to keep an eye out for all the programs that are going on in the library and, and go to them. And again, thank you to the staff for the program tonight, and congratulations to all of our award winners. I know as a former staff person, getting, getting kudos is really can make your, your day, your week, your year. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity to let staff know how much they're appreciated by not just the board, but the community at large. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Suzanne. Jameis Scavitch at large.
I really enjoyed tonight's meeting. I thought that both the staff, the staff honors, as well as Dustin and Diane's presentation. It was just a good wash of what our community wants and needs. I thought that the huge number of nominations for all of our staff members is a good reminder of how human our work is and how through everything, I mean, it's been two years now, and through everything, our staff is still making such a difference for people in our county. And Dustin and Diane, I thought the context you gave us about how many book reconsiderations are actually proposed in our libraries was just a really good dose of reality and context. So as we see the word clouds and we read the headlines and we go to our school board meetings and see all the passion behind some book challenges and, and this legislation, it's just so good to know that that is actually not an issue for us, knock on wood, but that we have sound policies in place and a sound history and track record of what a diverse community wants. So thanks to everybody.
Okay, thank you. And Providence, which would be Sue?
Wanted to say thank you for the presentation, this great information and knowledge. Definitely liked having the staff that were honored tonight. That was nice. And yeah, I don't really have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And Brian?
Yeah, I will, I'll echo that. Congratulations again to all the awardees and all the staff. I wish there was something we could do for the hundred and thirty or so people who didn't get the awards. But, but, you know, we, we do what we can. I have to agree with Keith. This is, this is one of my favorite meetings of the year. I like the collection presentation too, and I'm glad we're, we're at least thinking about the intellectual freedom problem, because that, that is a problem, or can be. The Strategic Planning Committee is meeting, I didn't have a report tonight, but nine to ten AM on Monday, the twenty-eighth of March is the next strategic planning, and I look forward, hopefully before that, to hearing what the staff committee has, has done on it. And finally, Burke Center, we have another book sale coming up, starting March seventeenth to twentieth, so it's, it's a big one. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for the announcement of your strategic planning meeting. I didn't know that. So I think we've come to the end of our agenda, and it's time for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sujatha. All in favor? Say yes. Okay, any opposed? Okay, all right, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much. Great meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everybody.
Bye, everyone.